Good evening and welcome to the April 11th, 2016 Hillsborough Township. We're missing our secretary. Okay. To the April 11th, 2016 Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting. In accordance with the State Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on April 7th, 2016 to the Hillsborough Beacon and Courier News. May I have a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Ms. Bogushevsky.
Here.
Ms. Santafanti.
Here.
Mr. Cohen.
Here.
Mr. Cooper. Mr. Datta.
Mr. Gillette.
Here.
Mrs. Haas. Mrs. Haley. Mr. Kinst.
Here. We have a quorum. I'm gonna introduce a motion to go to executive session. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset and the State of New Jersey as follows. The matters to be discussed are personnel matter, health benefits provider contract, and negotiations with the Hillsborough Education Association. B, the matters discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And we'll be back at 7:30 for the regular meetings. Thank you. Okay, welcome everybody. We're back from executive session. Like to welcome everyone to the April 11th, 2016 Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting. May I have a roll call, please? Mr. Mahmoud.
Ms. Bogushevsky.
Here.
Ms. Santafanti.
Here.
Mr. Cohen.
Here.
Mr. Cooper.
Here.
Mr. Datta.
Mr. Gillette.
Here.
Mrs. Haas.
Here.
Mrs. Haley. And Mr. Kinst.
Here. We have a quorum. If we can rise for the pledge allegiance, please.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. We have correspondence as is listed in the agenda, and I'd like to hand it over to Dr. Shift for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Kinst. I'm pleased to share with the community and the Board of Education some great news from around the district. First, the Hillsborough Middle School Theater Troupe just finished a two-weekend run of their spring musical, Seussical Junior. The show was excellent. Congratulations to all of the students and staff members and parents who donated countless hours of their time to making the show such a great success. Congratulations, Middle School Theater Troupe. Next, also, congratulations to Hillsborough High School senior Gianna Napolitano. Recently, the Reader Girls Lacrosse Season opener, Gianna, led the team to their first win of the season as she surpassed her 100th career goal milestone. Congratulations to Gianna. What an amazing girl. I'm pleased to also share with you tonight that the Hillsborough High School Girls Swim Team won the Central Jersey sectional title for the second time in team history and was recognized for the third year in a row by the National Interscholastic Swim Coaches Association as a Gold Scholar Team recipient. The gold award goes to teams with a combined GPA of 3.750 or higher. And the high school girls swim team earned a GPA of, get this, 3.896. The girls were not alone in their scholarship. The boys team earned titles also at the Central Jersey sectional championship, their sixth sectional title in team history, and was recognized for a third year in a row by the National Interscholastic Swim Coaches Association as a Silver Scholar Team. The silver award goes to teams with a 3.5 to 3.749 GPA. The Hillsborough High School boys swim team earned an average GPA of 3.729. Congratulations to all of our swimmers, both boys and girls, for their scholarship. I also want to recognize two of our staff members this evening. First of all, congratulations goes out to Autton Road Intermediate School's guidance counselor, Mrs. Angela Cleland. Angela had an article titled, quote, "School Refusal When the A Stands For Absence." This was published in the April edition of the NJEA Review. Congratulations on your article, Angela, and thank you for representing Hillsborough Township Public Schools. And finally, I'd like to congratulate our district science supervisor, Dr. Kim Feltry. Kim recently earned her Doctorate of Education from Rowan University in Educational Leadership. On April 1st, Kim defended her dissertation entitled, "Exploring Alternate Root Science Teacher Pedagogical Content Knowledge Development." Congratulations on your accomplishment, Dr. Feltry.
That's all I have this evening. Congratulations to the student athletes, and my daughter was in the pit band for the Seussical, so all weekend, every wake and sleeping moment, I had songs going through my head. But I won't do that here, because then that'll cause you guys to disperse. Okay, continue on with the agenda. We have approval of a minutes, so I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the March 28th, 2016 executive session minutes. One second. Any discussion? Okay. Was... I'll second. Okay. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Three abstentions. Yeah. Motion passes. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the March 28th, 2016 regular meeting minutes.
So moved.
Have a second. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Three abstentions. Motion passes. Thanks. Committee reports, I believe just the governance committee met. We met on April 4th. What we talked about were, we reviewed policy on public comment, which you'll see for first reading in the action agenda. And then we also discussed updating the strategic plan, which we'll discuss later as a full board, as a part of the working session later. And I think that was it from a committee's perspective. Okay. Now, I would like to open the dais, the podium, for public comment on the 2016-17 budget. So first, let's focus on the budget, and then we'll have comments from the board and public on the action agenda. So again, 2016-17 budget, which I believe that we will be finalizing and having a resolution on the next meeting in two weeks. Name and address, please.
Good evening. Henry Goodhue, Hillsborough Education Association, 16 Laurel Drive. Good evening, members of the Board of Ed. A budget can mean many things. A collection of line items, a list of expenditures and savings, or a means of investing in an organization. While a budget can be all these things, it should be only one, an expression of collective beliefs and values. Certain costs cannot be avoided, be they operational or other, but the emphasis placed on those areas should articulate the vision of an organization. Will importance be placed upon objects? Will money be allocated to meet the demands of unfunded mandates in technology, both of which have, excuse me, both of which have extremely short shelf lives and have yet to fully prove their benefit? The average life expectancy of technology ranges anywhere from three to seven years. Again, three to seven years. In some instances, less than the time it takes to receive tenure or move a student through some of our elementary schools. Should emphasis be placed on transient mandates and short-lived products, or is a better investment made in human capital? Take a look around this room. By now, you've heard the numbers, you've heard that the numbers on the backs of these shirts are far more than simple digits. These numbers show the years of experience, the years of dedication that these people have given to education, and more importantly, to Hillsborough. I assure you that many of these, and most certainly all will be, longer than three to seven years. We've piloted programs and applications. We've gone from paper and pencil lesson plans and grade books to online versions. Many initiatives come and go, but the one constant that will never change is the dedication of your staff. I assure you that the impact they have on students will last far longer than three to seven years. It is undeniable that the rise of educational technology now demands consideration, but it is only a finite piece of a child's educational experience. Each year, students, parents, and colleagues nominate an ESP and Teacher of the Year. We have yet to do that with an inanimate object. The challenge of an organization is to create a budget that clearly expresses its values, visions, and morals. Mere numbers and caps are a poor answer to this challenge. Rather, it is the allocation of these amounts that truly express the principles that guide and govern an organization. Funds can be allocated for items and endeavors that in best cases may last the span of a student's elementary education. Or investments can be made in those who not only shape a student's entire life, but also dedicate their own to these children and these schools. David Packard, co-founder of the tech giant Hewlett-Packard, once said that companies have a responsibility greater than money, the responsibility to recognize the dignity of their employees as human beings. The quote is his, but the challenge is yours. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comment on 1617 budget? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to open the podium now for public comment with regard to new business or items on the action agenda.
Hi, my name is Amy Salander. I'm a teacher here at Autton Road Intermediate School. I had a question about the Park test. At the last Board of Ed meeting, a parent had come up and asked about what counts as a test, and we've had some questions coming up about the validity. So I just wanted to get some clarification on the validation protocol used for the Park test. So for example, at the last Board meeting, you had stated that if a student just logs on and starts the test, that counts as the student taking the test. So my question is, does that also count towards a teacher's SGP, or is there a validity, is there like a validation process for that?
Good evening. Thank you for the question. We have, to answer very simply, you are accurate that the state of New Jersey has a validation protocol that if a child signs in and answers one question correctly, that validates the test. There are other online tests where they have two separate validation protocols. One protocol is to invalidate a test because the child didn't take enough time to complete a test. So if a kid just buzzes right through it, takes five minutes on a test that should take 45 minutes, then it would indicate to the administrator that that test is invalidated and that the child needs to retake the test. That did not occur with the Park. The second validation protocol, that's typical, is patterns. So if a child answers AAAA, or BBB, or ABC, or whatever that pattern is, it would kick it back to an administrator to say, this test is invalid, the child needs to take the test. So to answer you directly, no. None of those protocols were there. We did have, as a district, some questionable results that aren't accurate indicators of what children, no one are able to do. The state of New Jersey has required that we place the median SGP for teachers on their evaluation. We don't have a choice to that. But as leaders in the district, we have concerns about putting on any scores that we don't have confidence in for, to evaluate kids. If we don't have confidence in it to evaluate kids, then we shouldn't have confidence in evaluating educators. And we found that specifically, unfortunately, at the middle school level uniquely. So in both math and language arts. Now, eighth-grade math teachers do not receive an SGP score in the state of New Jersey, but seventh-grade math teachers do, and seventh and eighth-grade language arts teachers do. We have, and we will include, a statement on their evaluations indicating that the scores are questionable at best and that we have concerns about the validity of those scores. So although we have to follow the regulations, the code, the law, we're going to make it expressly clear for those teachers who evaluated that we have concerns about that locally.
Thank you. May I ask one quick follow-up? I'm sorry. Does the teacher, like, can a teacher, or can the district, is there any recourse for them as far as an appeal to the Department of Ed, or is there anything that we can do to maybe bring more light to this situation, this concern?
Yeah, I'm actually gonna be speaking directly with the deputy commissioner on Wednesday about this and some other issues, to see if the DOE will come out with some type of guidance, especially if there's clear and compelling irrefutable evidence that the scores are so different than years of scores that we have in the past.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I'm also second vice president of the HEA. I know you're wondering why are we all here tonight? And I know you're wondering usually, we do this type of thing if we go to impasse. Well, of course, we're all hoping we don't go to impasse. We're hoping that we can reach a fair settlement. But I'm here tonight because I want to respond to a comment that was put on Facebook. It was a comment made in response to our meeting last week, and it was in response to a video that was posted. And the comment from a board member said, "They don't care." Now, I don't know whether the "they" they were referring to was the board, the administration, or the public, but I find the sentiment that someone doesn't care sad. What I do know is we care. We care about the students of Hillsborough. We care what they learn and how they learn. We care that we have meaningful and appropriate professional development. We care about the health and safety of our staff and students. We care about the workload and all the extra time we devote to our jobs and our students. We care about the extracurriculars that enrich our students' minds and improve their health. We care about Hillsborough so much that we devote hundreds of hours to helping its citizens. We care about our own family's health and welfare, the ability to pay our bills, and the time to spend with our loved ones. We care about having rooms and buildings with heat when it's cold, and air conditioning when it is hot, so that the conditions are healthy for learning. We care about the whole child, as these students are our future. We care about the message we're sending our students with all this testing. We care about how these students feel about themselves. We care about Park and its effects on our futures. We care, even though someone may not. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, no. Send them back home.
Is there a siphon for this?
I feel very fortunate to be working in Hillsborough. I really love my job, and I look forward to coming to work every day, and that's the truth. I think it's a great place to work. I worked for eight years at ARIS. I loved working here, and now I've been working for the last two years at the middle school, and both places are amazing places to work. It's exciting to be part of this district. I want to thank Dr. Shift and the board for vigorously pursuing the one-to-one initiative. It has changed the way I teach. It has enhanced the learning of my students, and I love being a part of it. I'm also proud to be a part of a district that has been recognized as one of the top 25 districts in the state. We could not have achieved this fine distinction without the collaborative effort of both Dr. Shift, the board, and faculty. The board and Dr. Shift had the vision, and the staff implemented the plan of the board. As much as I enjoy working in Hillsborough, however, I am frustrated that my hard work is not being recognized in the form of adequate compensation. Now, I'm making this claim, and I teach science, so I tell my students, you can't just say something, you need evidence to back your claim. So what did I do? I called the U.S. Department of Labor, and I asked them, what has the cost of living, what's been the increase in the cost of living in this area of the state since 2011? And I was told that it's a 7% increase. And I do want to tell you this. My take-home pay has not increased since 2011. My take-home pay was higher in 2011 than it is today. So I'm asking the board to please collaborate with us to come up with a salary guide that shows the dedicated teachers of Hillsborough that you value our hard work, which in turn allows Hillsborough to be distinguished as one of the best districts in the state. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I need you, Pete? No, we're good. Good evening. Mary Beth DeLeese, 9 Stats Drive. I'm also an eighth-grade literacy teacher at the middle school. I just wanted to share some thoughts with you. Horace Mann, the father of American public education, recognized the importance of caring teachers in children's education. He said, "Teachers teach because they care. Teaching young people is what they do best. It requires long hours, patience, and care." When you look around the room tonight, please notice all the caring educators and support professionals who took time out of our busy schedules to show you how much we care about our students and our profession. If we didn't care, we would not be here. There are many of us here this evening, but there are many of us who could not be here. And make no mistake that they shared with us that they would like to be here, but they couldn't, because they have to work second and third jobs to support their families and supplement our ever-decreasing take-home salaries. As our negotiation team continues to work with the board on contract negotiations, remember that it's the proposals from both sides that demonstrate how much Hillsborough cares for its students and the professionals who provide their education. Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't break it. Okay. Good evening. Barbara Orr, 88 Equator Ave., Flagtown. Also, happy member of this distinguished faculty. I was drafted by the team in '05, and I'm extremely happy to be here. It's my 11th year in the district. I also had four children that went through this school district, and I'm proud to say that they had a wonderful, wonderful education here. Every year, I look into my classroom, I teach English, and every year I look at them and I think, who here is the future president of the United States? Who here is a lawyer that's gonna assist someone who really needs legal advice? Who here is the doctor that's going to finally cure cancer? Who here is someone who's going to make such a difference, maybe a Nobel Peace Prize winner? I know that I teach the future. I know that this profession, above all other professions, touches every profession. You all have teachers that you remember fondly that helped you. And I ask you to help us now. Lynn put it so beautifully. But I also want to say this. We do care. That's absolutely true. I now work three jobs because of the increased contributions we have to give, but on top of that, I still do what I can for my students. Last Wednesday, I had the honor of being at the Paul Robeson Youth Awards at Raritan Valley Community College. It was an incredible, incredible evening. I had nominated three of our African-American students on my team, and I was pleased to go there to meet their parents and to see them be applauded for their achievements and encouraged for their future achievements, because I know they are, they face challenges. We all do. But I worked three jobs, but I gave up that night to go there because I care. Friday night, the middle school, the musical that you mentioned, was phenomenal. And I had students that were in the play, and they kept asking me, Ms. Orr, are you gonna be there? Ms. Orr, are you gonna be there? And I said, absolutely. I wasn't a chaperone, I didn't get paid, but I went there to cheer on my students. And every one of them saw my face, and every one of them thanked me today for taking my time to go see them. I care. And I ask you to please take the time to help us to continue to care in the way that we do best. Thank you.
Thank you. So, this is a non-action portion of the meeting for the board, and this is with regard to our strategic plan. So, let's get to walk people through this. District's strategic plan is one of the primary responsibilities and roles of a Board of Education. We represent the community as its duly-elected members, and a strategic plan sets the direction of the district and provides a framework which many actions, decisions, and priorities are made. So as we develop our, we developed our current strategic plan back in 2012, and it covers five years, as many strategic plans do. Much of it was based on Dr. Shift's Report of Excellence when he came on board as superintendent, and we implemented a number of those things. And the strategic plan directed the priorities, investments, and actions, and the results of which we can see today. So the key strategic imperatives of our current strategic plan include embedding technology into our curriculum instruction, which you've heard some members of the public speak about, having deeper world language, both in terms of the breadth and depth from K through 12, utilizing student achievement data to continuously review and improve instruction, continuous staff development, more efficient facilities through tax-neutral means such as the ESIP, the Energy Savings Investment Plan that we did last year, and also with the referendum that was just approved for the parking lot and for the turf field, and also revenue-generating programs such as the Children at Play program at the kindergarten level. We are taking a look, we also took a look at the board committees and how we operate as a board, and we had a restructuring in terms of committee structure and continue to refine that. So, as the board initiated the strategic planning process last fall, for the next strategic plan, it was critical for us to have community input from staff and from the community. And we held five input sessions. One session was with the board and administration. There were four community input sessions. First one was on Borough Pride, what we were proud of for Hillsborough and what we felt is exemplary and we should continue. Second one was on gaps, and where we'd like to take the district next, or where the district to go. Third was on identifying, more specifically, on items that the community would like to be considered. And then fourth was a session on looking at data, the environment, to understand future implications. implications for decisions that the board would have to make. So, the administration catalogued the sessions and inputs for us, which the board members have reviewed individually and within each board committee, so education, human resources, operations, and governance. There was much support for items such as early education, including full-day kindergarten and preschool; high school education, including block scheduling, new expanded facilities, academics to provide specialized and differentiated educational experience, and vocational education Other items included regular and special education and student items, including expanded STEM, world language throughout the entire educational experience, mental health issues, updated facilities, and broader community and world interactions. The board has a lot of rich and robust input, and the board members and I would like to thank you for that valued input. Okay. It's a lot of data, a lot of information, a lot of these things many different people would like to see in the district. A strategic plan, however, is not a to-do list nor a menu. As I described before, a strategic plan provides a framework for the district. It articulates the district's vision and mission and the strategic imperatives that are the goalposts, the lighthouses, that identify where the district will head towards. Within each strategic imperative, key initiatives are identified to provide context and direction for decision-making, priority-setting, and taking action. For each of the strategic imperatives and key initiatives, the strategic plan should identify how they will be enabled, including program, staff, facility, technology, and finance, and the values provide the bedrock, the ethos, for the district. As I mentioned, a strategic plan should not be a to-do list nor a menu of options, and I took a look at all the inputs and tried to put some sense into it. I looked at different affinities that the items had and was able to identify some themes to segment the input, and these are what I'm calling the strategic imperatives. I tried to word them in a way to provide a context through which different facets of the strategic plan can be structured. Now, I came up with eight of them, which I'll review for you. First one, maximize college readiness, so there's a lot of input surrounding that, maximizing career readiness, individualizing learning opportunities, providing optimal early education, early childhood education, maximizing non-academic life enrichment, increasing ties to the local community, increasing ties to the world community, and instilling life capabilities and competencies. So, now, eight strategic imperatives, it's too much for an actionable strategic plan. It becomes more like a menu of options or a to-do list. So now what I'd like is for us as a board to discuss strategic imperatives as a board to determine which areas we want the district to focus on in the next strategic plan. So given where we are and how much time we have, I'd like for us to focus on where we want the district to go next and why. I don't want to get caught up in the hows or the whats at this stage. Those will fall into the strategic plan development and crafting, so there's a number of different items. As an outcome of this dialogue, I would consider success to be identifying about five strategic imperatives from these eight, and one or some of them can morph or merge to better reflect the values, the priorities for the board, or different ways of categorizing that. And so it's an opportunity for us to talk about what we want, where we want the district to head next. And I'm going to hand it off to Dr. Ivory, who has moderated and facilitated the different input sessions to help with us' board dialogue. Dr. Ivory.
I apologize to everyone over here that these chart stands are not going to be facing you as well, but we will turn them around because I know we'd like to make sure they're recorded so that those people who see the video also have a chance. Terrific. But I am very happy to be back with the board, and I would like to thank everyone who participated in our engagement sessions in the evening. We had a terrific turnout, and people were very consistent. We saw that number grow each time we came together, and that was really very positive. And people had a really terrific input that led to this document that we've come to refer to as the Rainbow Document, trying to capture those segmented, large ideas about where the engagement was leading us to think. So I wanted to make it clear that what we're not about tonight is identifying necessarily specific things that we're going to do, and again, how we're going to do it. For those who were with us and have had a chance to see the minutes, the ideas that were generated are voluminous. And to sit tonight and to sift through all of that is really virtually impossible. So what we want to say is that for all of those really good ideas that we saw during the process, and we talked about this just about every night, that many of them will be just picked off by administration, by teachers, school principals, people who will see good ideas that they can implement. And I know that there will be some level of communication back to the board about those ideas that are being implemented, taken from the work that resulted from the engagement of the community across the board. So what we thought we would do tonight is to take a look at those real large ideas that would be reflected within these categories. And there's going to have to be, again, some prioritization where you're headed, and there'll be a lot more dialogue that has to take place following tonight. But if I'm, I'm going to jot down as best I can some of your thinking as we go through in no special order, because each of you most likely has particular areas that are up here of these eight categories where you have particular interest. So what we'd like to do is identify those thoughts that you have that would relate to these eight categories to get your thinking and conversation going around the table. Okay? So, we start right here? We're just going to keep going around the table and asking you to give us your thoughts on what you'd like to see up here relative to any of these particular topics. And you can pass, and we'll just keep going around the table until we've reached a point where we feel we've pretty much exhausted the conversation.
Are we going beyond what's already there? Or are we just reiterating what we like up there?
If you're, you shouldn't be confined to what's up there. This is open. Every time we came together at the sessions, it was open. We don't limit ourselves to what we talked about before, and that applies tonight. So if you have a particular interest that wasn't addressed, that might not be on that list, we need it up here.
And if it was addressed?
And if it was, we still need it up here because we need to find out what kind of thinking around the table reflects what your thought is. Okay? Does that help you?
Yes.
So why don't you start? Do you have something in particular you'd like me to put up here?
Yes. Full-day kindergarten.
Full-day kindergarten. Where would you like me to put that?
I guess under, well, it could go in multiple categories. I mean, if you look long-term, it could go, I mean, obviously it goes into the early childhood area.
Yes. I'm putting it under provide optimal early education.
Right. But if you look long-term, I mean, it could maximize college readiness, too. So, I would put it there, too. And maximize new academic life enrichment. I mean, it could go, I would say, almost in every category.
I mean, there's...
Okay. I'll go choose those two. Maximizing college readiness and early childhood.
Okay. Well, I gave you another one.
Okay.
Why don't we just go right around? Go ahead.
Yeah, right. Uh-oh, that's right. I mean, there's always a mistake in having me speak first because then there won't be anything left for anybody else.
Well, you're second. We're okay.
You're second, so don't say anything like that. Not that I have no opinions on anything. I agree with my colleague here about full-day K, clearly. I think we had a really good plan for the last five years, and I thank our superintendent for that because, you know, he saw a whole bunch of things that we weren't already doing and really improved the district. Some of these categories, to me, are what we should be doing every single day, and I don't see it as part of a strategic plan. I see it as part of our responsibility. But moving on from there, it would be nice to have specific projects that would have deadlines and prioritization so that we can keep track of these things happening and not just, you know, hope that it happens. Hope is not a strategy. I'd also like to involve the community more in having like a check of how we're doing every so often. We talk about communication with the community, but at the same time, how do we get information from the community about whether or not we're actually achieving any of these goals, other than the occasional letter to the Board of Ed or, you know, people coming to a board meeting to express issues that they personally may have? But I'd really like to have a better way of getting a pulse check from the whole community.
So I'm taking the liberty to put that under increased ties to local community, conversation with the community slash assessment. That's what I heard you say. You want to know what they think about how well you're doing, what your progress is. Terrific.
And everything we hear, you know, basically, you know, looking around the board, if you have young kids, you hear certain things. If you have high school kids, you hear other things. And it's all anecdotal. Let's get real. Let's see if we could find out some real information about how we're doing.
Terrific. I'm going to move to the next person, though, so we keep...
Wait a second. Whoa, whoa, whoa. Time out. That was in no way my number-one issue.
Okay. You can give us your number-one. We'll get it up there.
My number-one issue is closing the achievement gap for once and for all. This is something that confounds districts left and right. We do such a good job here. I would like to see the achievement gap closed for once and for all. And I'd like us to address the diversity in this district and deal with whatever issues are out there that cause any student in this district not to realize their full potential.
Okay. I'm putting that under two categories there. Not that it can't read...
You can put it in five categories.
Yes. It's not much different than pre-K, but thank you very much.
Pass.
Pass?
Well, let's first do board members. So, okay, they're passing it on.
We're passing you?
No, no, no. I'll speak to a couple of things.
I know Dr. Schiff had said that he would like this to be focused on the board initially.
Yeah. Well, the college readiness piece is, I think that we have a good focus on there. I think we could take it to the next level by providing deeper and richer experiences that would help differentiate our students to make them more competitive. But actually, a part that I'm a little bit more passionate about, and that piece of, you know, I had ideas about with regard to academies, and this was many years ago, so I'd love to see that be part of the strategic plan. But one piece I'm actually quite passionate about is that college isn't for everybody, and all colleges are not for all kids. And what I mean by that is there are a lot of opportunities to have very successful, fruitful, productive careers without having a college degree. And there are also many college degrees which will not provide the best opportunities for students. So college is not the answer for everybody. And so I think we have a gap there, maybe a blind spot with regard to career readiness and opportunities that we have for our students to pursue a non-college pathway. So whether it's becoming independent, working in a family business, working in the trades, those are very skillful and lucrative and successful opportunities, and I, you know, I think those get short shrift through it. So that's what I'll...
Thank you. I put that under closing the achievement, well, closing the achievement, making our students competitive, college readiness, but also expanding opportunities beyond college, talking about non-college and entrepreneurialism, which is becoming another real focus in terms of businesses and creating business, et cetera.
You look at the people who've created the multi-billion-dollar capital, almost one trillion with Apple, you know, he went to college but dropped out. Same with Gates, you know, and he's had a very successful business, and now he's got the, you know, now he's got a very successful philanthropy, so.
I don't know whether you've seen, there's a grant program out there, I want to say Thiel, I'm not sure if that, T-H-E-I-L, $100,000 grants to young people who are dropping out of college and creating businesses. It's really quite amazing.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'd like to see a real five-year plan to provide more and better resources to our special education students. I don't think ultimately any of us, including the public here, are going to be judged by how well we do our gifted and talented program. Those kids that are qualified for that program, they'll be fine. I think ultimately, we're going to be judged by what we do for our students that are most in need, and I don't know that we've really had a five-year plan for that. So, and I'm not even mentioning costs, although I will take now this opportunity to call for Larry Fine said to please resign because he is a disgrace as the head of our association. He's absolutely a disgrace. His idea of controlling costs for special education is to advocate for a waiver, for a tax levy waiver, so that we can just tax higher for special education. That will only make costs soar. It would not help at all with a five-year plan. It would be outrageous. So I think special education, that's my number-one and probably the only one that I could think of right now.
Terrific. Thank you.
I actually had the opportunity of bringing both my children to two different meetings, so I'm going to discuss what it is that they want, who, they're both young, third grade and fifth grade. My fifth-grade son would like the increased ties to the world community by using their Google Drive and talking to other students of that grade in another country. If they're learning about China, England, or anywhere else in the world, to sign up and do some kind of pen pal and see exactly what it is that they're doing educational-wise. My younger son, who is in third grade, he thinks differently. So to him, he would like to talk about maximize career readiness, bring more tech. Instead of going to like a technological high school, bring that more to this community. If you are not very gifted in reading or writing, but you can do very well in math and science, go towards that aspect and then have the individualized for student goals.
Thank you. And the young people who came to our community engagement evenings were absolutely terrific. Yes. Should be very proud of them.
It's not as easy when you get to this side of the table. But I think what kind of, when I looked at the chart that Tom had put together originally after all the feedback, was I said a lot of it to me was philosophical in the sense that, you know, the warm and fuzzy was your yellow reds, like...
But I think what kind of, when I looked at the chart that Tom had put together originally after all the feedback, was I said a lot of it to me was philosophical in the sense that, you know, the warm and fuzzy was your yellow reds, like what we really hope and what we feel. And then the other side's, how are we going to implement that? You know, and every student is different, and we've learned from every student that comes through, you know, the classrooms here, that I think we are missing some students in terms of either some opportunities that they would like that they don't qualify for educationally, whether they want to challenge themselves in certain classes that they just aren't given the opportunity to based on their scores or their rubric or whatever. But then I do think we are missing the boat on some children who don't quite know what they're ready to do yet. You know, we have a lot of opportunities, but there are some electives and stuff that I think we're not offering our students that could benefit them after school.
So, of course. I'm working like extracurricular like this?
Not even extracurricular. I think some of our, yeah, course selections.
High school?
Right. But some of them just, they're good, but they're not. I do love that we still have in our STEM program at the middle school that we still have home ec and cooking and sewing and woodshop, that we've managed to do that within the realms of STEM. You know, STEM is a philosophy of thinking, not necessarily how you do it. And so, I think they still need to be there. Those kids learn that there. Whether they choose to do it at high school is another option, a different story. But I like that we still have that there. You know, they will use that skill set somewhere. So, I'd like to keep that there, but I'd also like to be able to look at what electives we offer and if we're missing the boat on some post-high school careers.
So, I want to make sure I'm capturing you correctly. I have down here more choices to drive opportunities. That's what I heard you saying. I also heard you saying, you mentioned academies, and what I've put down here is academies slash diversity of program options. So, we tend to think of academies as driving the upper end, and that's often where academies start. But the ultimate design of an academy would be very diverse because not everyone is going to be the rocket scientist. Some of the people are going to be these highly skilled technicians who even do the cleanup around the rocket before it goes up. So, there are all different levels of job opportunities that are driven out of an academy structure.
Well, even colleges have set up their classrooms so that your scientist still does the science, but there's an open-door policy so that the art student down the hall might be the one who's coming to help solve your problem. It doesn't necessarily have to be that you learn it all and you do it, but that you're working together to solve the problem.
Yes, thank you.
Tom echoes some conversations that we've had regarding this over indulgence of preparing for college. You know, it's, I think this factory producing 40, $50,000 a year students is sickness. It's a disease. I think a lot of the leadership that should be more focused on are things that, you know, in the real world, or say, for example, if you take a sports analogy, you're only as good as the weakest member of your team. I think we do a fantastic job with our excellent students, with our middle-type students. I think we do an excellent job with arts, with sports, with extracurricular activities. We're tops, but I think we forget about these kids that are not going to go to college. We force-feed them that they have to go to college, and we don't deal with that there's a real world out there balancing checkbooks. There's a real world out there of a need of plumbers, technicians. And I think, you know, this is all so heavy over here. If you showed this, just turn this board around. You've got two things over here and you've got 18 things over there. And it's, all it's doing is repeating the same, it's regurgitating the same nonsense that we don't need to be doing. You know, we do a great job at college readiness. We do a great job of individual learning opportunities. We have an excellent special ed program. You know, we gotta start force-feeding our five-year-olds full-time school and not let them be kids. Let's talk about emotional intelligence, not IQ. Let's talk about EQ and getting kids prepared to be human beings. Really stand-up, critical thinking, self-reliant, independent, all right? That's what I think. And all that ties into world community, local community, charity, doing what's best for the community, what's best for your neighbor, and maximizing non-academic life enrichment. I like to see that board with 18 things on it, not that board.
So, your point here about options for the non-college bound is up here as well.
I think you need to talk about vocational, for lack of another term, that people can't understand vocational opportunities. When I went to high school, we had auto body shop. That was in the 60s, all right?
We had that in the 80s, and our valedictorian took that class.
But here's the thing.
We had all the decades coming.
Here's the thing. You're either, you're college-track or you're not. And if you're not college, if you don't want to be college-track, but everybody else is, then we know what the game is when we're in school. It's a group thing. Nobody wants to be not, you know, nobody wants to be part of, not be part of the crowd, you know? And then there's the cocktail party crowd that says, where did your son and daughter go to school? Or how many acceptance forms did you get? You know, so it becomes a self-fulfilling prophecy. And what happens? I know so many parents who send their kids to freshman year in college and drop $45,000, get $10,000 back after three or four weeks of school. And then what's the child doing? Enrolling in Raritan Valley, which is a great opportunity, which, by the way, my daughter went to and volunteered to go to. Could've went to any school. They said, why do I need to waste my time, blah, blah, blah? The point is, we don't teach emotional intelligence. We don't raise human beings. We force-feed them college. We do a great job at that. And I don't know specifically. I know a lot of smarter people around here can fill in the blanks. That's just my gut.
We heard a lot of that, though, during our open sessions, didn't we? A lot of people talked about this need to explore...
I don't know. Most of the thing I see up there is full-time kindergarten, full-time kindergarten, full-time kindergarten, full-time kindergarten. College readiness, college readiness. I don't see what we really need. This is what we really need.
So, real quick, I'd like to have an opportunity for our student representative to speak, to share her perspective.
We're here now.
And think across your entire student career.
You've been hearing all these great ideas. What do you think, what are students thinking about all of this? Right up close. Use your cafeteria voice. Your gym voice when you're out on the field.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Did you have anything else you'd like to add? Okay, not yet. Okay, that's okay. Do we want to go around again? Is there anything to add?
I just want to add real quick. I mean, a lot of what you say, and I agree with. And being a college professor, I see students that probably shouldn't be there. Again, this is the US system, and European system is half of you are not going to college. You go to a different high school. You go, you know, they don't force everyone to college, unfortunately. Now, but I think a lot of this goes to that element that you want, that VOTEC side, which we don't offer. And I think that's why people see college as the only opportunity because the students that go to VOTEC, there's some stigma because they're leaving our district. We don't offer it here. I think if we had, you know, again, like you said, in the 80s, we had a shop in our, you know, we had an auto shop in my high school. You could take it. You didn't have to leave and all that stuff too. I think if we expand the high school or expand the offerings to offer this, you kind of take the stigma away. There are students that might try that out and still go to college, or might, you know, find that, you know, I can make a lot of money in high school doing auto repair or doing hair or doing whatever, and I don't need to go to college because I'm making a nice living now. So, I think to get on that side might be that, which is up, that kind of expanded our opportunities by, and the easiest way is that VOTEC kind of component. And just real quick, I don't think sending a kid to a full-day kindergarten is necessarily forcing them into college because there's a lot of kids that go to full-day kindergarten in this country that they don't all go to college, like you said. And full-day kindergarten doesn't mean full-day academics. It means a lot of it is play and hands-on stuff that they don't get to do.
Full-day kindergarten is full-day learning. There's no playtime. There's no...
That's not it. No. You see, that's a misconception. My kid went to the CAP program here. That's full-day kindergarten, yet half the time is hands-on learning because that's how it's structured and that's how it should be structured. I don't believe that a kid needs to be sitting in there 24, you know, for the full day. And kindergarten, yes, learning math and reciting his numbers and reading. I don't believe in that. I believe that they could be at school and do those activities they don't have time for now in a half-day.
And guess what? We have about 38 preschools in Hillsborough, all of them from this level and all the way down here babysitting us. And anybody who wants to go there can go there, full-time or half-time, once a week to five times a week. It shouldn't be put on the taxpayers for their responsibility to pay for so many kids to sit in the classroom full-time with the, not, oh, they're going to become better college-appeared students, which is nonsense.
With regard to full-day K, there's a wide range of things that can be done for an early education opportunity. We have options. We have the child at play, which is, it's a different type of learning, and it's optional where it's tuition-based. There could be things from a reconfiguration of our current. So, we have five half-days during the week. You could say you want to have more time on task. That's what's important. So, you send the kids Monday and Thursday full-day and a half-day on Wednesday. And then the other half of the district is going Tuesday and Friday with a half-day on Wednesday. So, there's different things that could be done, but it's the, are we willing to look at early childhood education? Is there a way to improve it? And is that one of the, is that one of the areas that we would want to take the district to go? And part of it is also fully understanding what all the benefits and costs are. So, you know, we'd have to look at the data. Do students that are in full-day K, are they performing better at third grade compared to those who are only regular half-day K? Data may say, you know, there may be a benefit first year, maybe two years, but then it washes out. So, but that's to say, that's not to say either A, today, we're going to go full-day K, or B, we're not going to do it at all. I think that if we put it on there, part of the strategic plan will be answering some of these complex and meaty subjects. So, there are quite a few that on here that are going to take quite a bit of research. So, whether it's, you know, looking at facilities and improving facilities, there's some pretty lofty, some pretty bold ideas in terms of new facilities, and those, you know, those have a price tag associated with it. So, is it something that we can afford? How can we afford it? Those types of things. So, again, I don't want to get into the hows and the whats. I want to, if we can focus in and kind of hone this to five things, then we can say, okay, how would we implement this, and then what do we need to do in terms of what can we implement right away? Or what are things that are going to require some research? What are some things that require a level of planning? Dr. Ivory?
Dr. Schiff, do you want to...
I'd address some of the things. Just to reflect what I'm hearing. I'm hearing certainly differing of opinions on a few things that we're talking about. But I'm hearing about the need to at least examine the first initial steps as children begin their experience in Hillsborough Township Public Schools, and how do we prepare them to take steps after their experience at Hillsborough Public Schools? And the third thing that I've heard is how do we make the experience between those two times something of value? Something, you know, kids don't only learn in schools, they live in schools. And part of what's on that left side really speaks to me about student life and about that experience and making sure that we're caring for the kids well enough so that they can follow whatever dreams they wish to have. And I think the idea of career readiness is very important for us to really contemplate because from my position, we graduate, almost 97% of our kids every year graduate from Hillsborough High School. That's extraordinarily high graduation rate. 80% of those kids go to two- and four-year colleges and universities. 80% of those kids have a college degree after six years. That means we have at least over 120, 160 kids that after they go through Hillsborough High School, graduate, go to a two- or four-year college or university, do not have a college degree. And the question that I think about a lot is, what are they doing? And could we have done anything differently to prepare them to participate in not only a free and democratic country, but be able to raise a family, own a home, to, you know, to send their kids to school, to colleges or other things? Have we done enough in that particular area? We do have a county VOTEC. We do send children to county VOTEC. But half of the kids that go to county VOTEC, or half the kids that apply to county VOTEC, are actually rejected from the program. So, there is certainly a greater demand than there is a supply and seats over there. And it's something I think we have to consider seriously. The other thing that we have to consider very seriously is something that Mrs. Hosbro brought up and something that I care very deeply about, and that's the achievement gaps that we have in our district, what we see in our region, and what we see in our state and our country. That there are children who are at risk, who come to school way behind many other kids. We have kids that are on free reduced lunch. We have kids that are coming in from environments that are not as rich as other environments, and they're actually not at the same starting line as everyone else. And the way that we can close some of those gaps, especially for those kids who we know are coming in with achievement gaps, is to try to start them as early as possible. And that kind of at-risk population gives us the best opportunity to close those achievement gaps if we get to them young. And I'd leave you with this final thought, that what we hear from our staff, what we know from the data and the evidence that children in this generation are dealing with a lot more stress than prior generations have. There is a higher percentage of children that are diagnosed with a variety of emotional challenges and are medicated. This presents a unique challenge at this time that we didn't have a generation ago. And we have and continue to provide additional mental health supports and other type of assistance to kids throughout the district. But if we don't get that right, a lot of this other stuff doesn't matter a whole heck of a lot. We need happy, healthy kids in order for us to have a bright future for all children. So, to kind of close up, I'm hearing that it's kind of falling into a few buckets, not into eight different buckets. I'm hearing that we need to look at our early childhood programs and our offerings. I'm hearing that we need to ensure that college and career readiness maintains, continues to be a focus, but maybe a new focus on the career readiness, and this opportunity for student life and making sure that that is, that's done well. So, I'm trying to synthesize a lot of the information as our time is kind of running short at this point.
You know, take, we'll take my comments down just a notch, just to tie in what you just said.
Yeah.
When we...
Can't hear you.
We start looking at the...
Just talk into your microphone.
Speak into the mic, please.
We start looking at those students that have fallen into that crack, for lack of another term. I think it's to take the stigma off of, you know, not going to college. And if we, it, it's not a hard sell to turn that around, to say, "Look, we've got this fantastic archi-, you know, drafting program. We have this fantastic arts program. You don't have to go to college to be involved in the arts. To, we have this great mechanical, you know, program for plumbing, just general maintenance, you know, that, so you take the stigma away from that. But we're not saying you're not going to learn history. We're not saying you're not going to learn English. You still have the core curriculum, but we can, we can integrate it in such a way as they don't have to feel that, you know, they have that level, but they have a sufficient level. But it, it has to come from the feds, it has to come from the state. We have so many guidelines that we have to follow and mandates that it's going to be very difficult to find it, an integration between what we're, we're just talking about. We have to agree. It's, it's not something we could just, we could just flip a, a switch and say, "We're going to do this."
Oh, no. And, and I, and I think our next steps in the strategic planning process is for you to task administration to bring back to the board, for lack of a better word, studies in major areas that we identify, in order for the board then to make a determination about what to implement, if anything, to implement. Because right now, we're just kind of having a conversation. But if I was in your shoes, what I would want to know is what is the best practice and research in full-day K, in preschool, in vocational education, in mental health support? You know, what is that? What does the budget look like? What does the implementation plan look like? If we, if we do some building, how does that affect the rest of the schools? You know, I mean, it's, it's complex work, but, and we need time. But I think we're at a point now where we should be, begin to not only synthesize, but to begin to direct administration, at least for the first year, if not the first two years of the strategic plan, to come back fully researched on these major areas that we'd like to learn more about. And then at a specific time, in, you know, a year or two, to then pull the trigger on the idea of what do we wish to implement at that point. And then we spend the rest of the time doing that implementation. Because some of the things, and I agree with, I'm not sure Brett or Judy said it, but some of those things are low-hanging fruit that we're talking about. Some of those things are not part of really strategic thinking, big ideas, but some are. And those things that are big and complex, I think, require the board to be fully informed and aware before you make a decision on any of those big strategic items. We heard from, from the community, we had lots of different ideas, you know, we heard some major things, that are some big things that, that the board needs to consider. Do you want to task us to begin to study this and provide you with that type of analysis, that you can make a well-informed decision? But it's not going to happen right now, and it's not going to happen for, you know, for the next budget cycle. It's probably going to take two.
And again, it's, it's a mix. So, and the big ones completely aligned, yeah, that's, that's going to take some time.
Can I still go around?
What's that?
Can I still go around?
If you want. I'm just trying to, I'm looking at, looking at the time and see if we're at a point that we can... Go ahead.
All right. Well, no one mentioned our teaching staff, and I just wanted to say that what's very important to me is that we attract the very best teachers. I think we, we do that now. I think we have the, the best teaching staff, and our whole staff, but I'm going to single teachers here. And I think we, I think we do that through being a great district to work in, that people want to come to work and apply here. I think we do it through, through salary. I know we have the, our teachers have the third-highest median salary in the 30-plus districts in some 100 counties. I'd like to see at the end of this five years to at least maintain that ranking, where teachers are at the top of those, of those 30 districts in their median salary. I'd like to see that continue. I think that will, I think those are the ways you attract great teachers, by having a great place to work and a high salary. I'd like to see that continue. And I don't know how that fits in with any of the plan here, but I think it's important. I think attracting teachers, I know when we get many dozens or hundreds of applications for a single-job opening, I think that's tremendous. That's, I, I love to see that, and I, I think we're doing good. I'd like to see that continue. I don't want any, I don't want that to suffer at the expense of any of the other things.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gillette. Okay. Are you, I think we're in a...
I think you're, I think you're in real good shape.
Yeah. I mean, I'm, just to, just to echo and see it in a similar manner, that maximizing college and career readiness, individualizing learning opportunities, which include both regular and special education, and then providing the optimal early education. I think that kind of gives you the whole span of the college career. And then the increasing ties to the world community is kind of part of the individualizing, the, the learning opportunities, instilling life capabilities, ties to local community, maximizing the non-academic life enrichment. That, I think, I like the idea of, I like calling it student life and ways to, to enhance student life, or, or we can come up with some, some terminology to it. But I think that kind of summarizes it to the...
And we know a number of these items could be spread into other categories, and we didn't do that, just because of time.
So, so what we'll do, so I want to thank everyone. I want to thank the board members. We haven't had discussions like this in quite a long time, so it's nice for us to do so. Probably should do it more, more regularly. But what we'll do from a, from a strategic planning perspective is that we'll, we'll take this and we can start building some, some structure around it, some frameworks around it, so that... Thanks, Steve. So then we can start building a framework and then having that go through there. And it's going to include things that we would do both over the, over the five-year period. And so that includes both things that would be implemented from year one, or things that need to be researched, timing that needs to be considered, and then, and then implemented. So I want to thank everybody. Okay?
I actually have one more thing.
Sure.
Sorry. Sorry. We actually talked a little about this at the governance committee meeting, but we talked about having innovation centers. And this is something that doesn't require a strategic plan either, but I think it might take into account a lot of the things that people were talking about, because like you could have those at every grade level, and you could have them in some of the vocational areas. You know, if you think about our robotics team, that's an innovation center. And recently, Dr. Schiff and I met with our new assemblyman, Andrew Zwicker, who's a physicist, and he was talking about the number of scientists per square foot in Somerset County, in Princeton, in this area, and that there are people out there who are prepared and willing and able to mentor our children. We have all these pharmaceutical companies around here. Why couldn't we, outside of the curriculum or within the curriculum, offer a certain number of credits for participating in an innovation process that the kids themselves could determine based on their own interest, and finding these kinds of mentors for them? And frankly, it could happen at every age. And, you know, it's sort of the direction, you know, and I'm thinking very much about Steve's auto shop. Your auto shop doesn't work on autos anymore. Autos are now all computerized. You can't change your oil yourself anymore. And, you know, it, it just requires higher education, perhaps not college, but there are technical schools out there, too. So, you know, we could have an innovation center for, you know, engines and, you know, automotive things.
You do have small engines.
And it could, well, I know, but I'm talking about something a little bit more. And, you know, if we look in that kind of direction, we could also help every kind of kid and every kind of interest find something that makes the rest of the day in school more interesting, because they start to, you know, make the connections together. So that's my last word.
All right. All right. Thanks, everyone.
How'd it happen, right?
Thank you, Dr. Ivory.
Very welcome.
And...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes.
Excellent. Okay. I'd like to wrap up that working session. Okay, now we're going to move to the action agenda. Dr. Schiff. Thanks again, everybody, and audience, too, for listening in.
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of education to approve travel and related expenses, the HIB investigation list, the overnight field trips is listed, and out-of-district placement.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items A1 through A4 of the action agenda.
So moved.
Okay. Any discussion? Scene, unroll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Mr. Bogczyski?
Yes.
Ms. Fante?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Hos?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passes. Continuing on with the action agenda. Dr. Schiff.
I ask for the board's of the, for consideration of the motions that I'm making under the area of human resources to approve the resignations as listed, leaves of absences, and approve the appointments of long-term sub custodians, substitutes, mentors, student teachers, extra-period coverage, and preapproval for extra-period coverage.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items B1 through B17 of the action agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Mr. Bogczyski?
Yes.
Ms. Fante?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Hos?
Yes.
And Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passes. Continuing on. Dr. Schiff.
I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of operations to approve financials, the bylaws for first reading, participation in public board meetings, bylaw 0167, line item transfers.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items C1 through C3 of the action agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Can someone tell me a little bit about the policy, the policy changes for the public participation?
Mm-hmm.
Who's, who's...
We can both...
Tell a little background about how, how it, um...
Yeah. So this is one of the strass estimate.
Okay.
So some of it, some of it is with regard to, like, I think before, I think currently we have, when it looks like that there's going to be a lot of public comment, we can limit it to two minutes per person. And so I think there was a precedent with a, with a case that extends, it should be at least three minutes. So we extended that to three. And then there were some other, other items which, the way that I characterize it is, a lot of it is kind of limiting for the public in terms of things that they can talk about, or, you know, I can call, I'll call people out for being obscene or rude, or that type of thing. And it's, it's more, I see it more as just a fallback. It's, it's not, at least, an ethos that I'd like to have with regard to public input. I want to facilitate as much public input as we can.
Well, I saw, I liked, I liked some parts of it that, it, number four, about all, we used to have all statements shall be directed to the presiding officer, and that was the entire, basically, the entire, or no participant made it address or question board members individually.
Right.
But there was really no clarification or backup to what that meant.
Yeah.
And I like that it goes a little bit more here. Any questions are directed by a participant to another. Order must be redirected to the presiding officer, then you determine.
Yeah.
Because I think that gives more flexibility. It puts in, sort of in the, in the policy what we have already been doing under you, Tom, but that hasn't always been the case under every president. It's like, no, I'm not letting any board member ever speak or respond to any question, even if you had a better knowledge of it and were better able to do it. But this puts, you, you know...
Yeah. I saw most of this clarification of how we...
Right. So that, I think that's good. I just was, I guess I was just merely asking about the, the two to three minutes, because if it's, if there's, if we have a very long agenda, and a lot of committee reports, and a lot of other things going on, and maybe a presentation with the orchestra or something, and then we have, also have a lot of people that want to speak, and we're going to limit to 60 minutes, then say two minutes instead of, and say three, now, change it to three minutes each, that allows 20 people to speak instead of 30. So there is a trade-off. But you said this, this is the recommendation based on, I guess, maybe people being cut off at a meeting somewhere, and, and three is better. Then that's fine with me. I understand it.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry.
All right. Don't worry.
Okay. Thanks, Tom. Thanks, Judy.
Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood. Again, C1 through C3.
Yes.
Ms. Fante?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Hos?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passes. That ends the action agenda. I'd like to open the podium back up to the public. This could be for any items.
Hi. Jean Trujillo, 5 Eric Court, Hillsborough. This is actually not at the cell tower today. I just wanted to comment about the strategic plan, and I just wanted to thank Dr. Schiff for addressing the mental health of our students. My daughter's in seventh grade. You know, she's just starting middle school. But a lot of her friends, and I think I see this in her, too, I think the stress of school, the stress of grades, good grades, the stress of college, it's too much for the kids, I think. And I, and I think also in the high school, you know, it's going to get worse. The high school starts at 7:30. I think some of the elementary schools also start at 7:30. I really hope that when you look at the strategic plan, that you may consider pushing back the start times for high schools, because research has shown that more sleep for teenagers really benefits their mental health. So I hope that you'll consider that. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening. Hal Brown, Stonewick Drive. I was just looking for a status report on a turf field. We got the money from the state, or we've issued the bonds, or whatever.
Mr. Mahmood will address that.
Mr. Brown, we're in the process still of meeting with our architect. As far as federal funding, state funding, we have not, leasing has not happened either yet as far as funding it. We are still in the process of working with our architect on the bid specifications. Once we have that, and the architect has the specifications, then we go about the shopping, and whether we decide on working with a consortium and/or going out to bid. That's going to be a decision that has not been made at the moment.
So there's no decision officially from the board concerning who's competitive bidding or to go through the co-op?
Right. Right now, there is no decision. The architects are professionals, between our attorneys and our architects, the board will get guidance from the professionals as to how we're going to go about that process. So that has not happened as of today.
And it cannot happen until this board approves it, right? The whole nine members or whatever the board will decide which route to take.
The, the approval on a bid, Mr. Brown, would have to go through the board. So if the board approves a bid, and that would have to go through the board, you'd see that via resolution. The board has previously adopted a resolution to go into a consortium agreement with various consortiums, which means if it's offered by a consortium, the board can sign a contract, not via resolution, be it that original resolution that allowed the board to enter into an agreement with the consortium. So you would see it as a public member, or the board would see it, on a board's bill list, or as it's reviewed through a committee. But basically, the only way the public would see the bid is if it went out to bid and the board was awarding a bid. But if it's going through the co-op, it would be a decision that's made at the committee level by the professionals to the board, and ultimately on a bill source.
But before, before we go, I, I think it's important also to note that if we do go with a co-op, they go through the bidding process. So whether it's gone through a co-op or through our board, we still have to follow all of the, all of the public purchasing and the, and the bidding laws.
Well, Dr. Schiff, and you and the board president and your business administrator in offline chats told me there, this is a board that likes transparency.
Yeah.
Now I'm being told that you don't have to tell the public what you're paying for. It's not going to competitive bidding. You're going to go through a co-op. I don't, my opinion or my judgment, that's not transparency.
No, no, no. So, we have, we, there, no, no decision has been...
Let me...
Yeah, let me, Steve, Steve. So no, no decision has been made yet. We're going to find out what the different options are. Our, our commitment is to get the lowest cost as possible, and that could be done either through a co-op by looking at what the prices are. It could be going through a co-op that had just recently gone through a competitive bidding process, or it could be for us implementing a competitive bidding process. So each of those have different sets of costs, and we would take that into consideration.
All right. With this process, why would a letter or an email go out from your architect saying a decision's already been made by the board to use the co-op?
That letter is an error.
I have a copy of the letter. And I have a proposal here for $220,000 less than you're asking for. You're going to borrow $608,000. I have a legitimate proposal to do that job for under $400,000. Did you pay an architect a fee to come up with that $608,000?
I, you know...
Where did that figure come from? Because it's out of line with what everybody else is paying for a field.
So...
We don't have a question yet.
Yeah, we, I guess, Mr. Brown, I have to forgive the board, they don't have the document that you have, so right now, you're speaking...
I'll pass it around. I have a copy.
No, I appreciate that, but we, the public school contracts law is very specific. Our professionals, between the lawyers and the architect, are actually advising the board every step of the way.
You're getting bad advice.
I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
You're getting bad advice. I'm not throwing this board under, and I'm not trying to stop this project. I want the best possible and safest field for the least amount of money.
Yeah.
And I found somebody that can do it, and they've been told, "Don't bother, the decision's been made. We don't want to hear from you."
Let me be very clear, that this board has not made a decision where you're hearing it, or what you have in front of you. You have nine, or the majority of this board are very clear in a public meeting that are saying to you, "No decision has been made." I want to be very clear, I don't know what document you have, I don't know who gave it to you, but the board has not entered into any agreement with any vendor at this moment.
And you're going to open it up to competitive bidding?
We will follow the advice of our professionals.
I found you. I just saved you to over $200,000.
So if you can, if you can give us that paperwork, that...
I'll be glad to, I'll be glad to meet with any members of the board that would like to chat with me after the meeting. I'll turn over all my paperwork.
Okay, and I appreciate you also advocating on behalf of the quote that you got.
Actually, you got it, last June. Has anybody on the board seen the quote from last June, from a company that walked the field?
Yeah.
June the 30th, there was a company that walked your field and put a proposal in for under $400,000.
Yeah, yeah.
Is anybody, is anybody on this board know?
You work for that company.
I do not. I have no financial connection.
Right. And also, just a real quick, the comment that you made with regard to what was in the referendum and the $600,000 that was in there, that was based on estimates that we provided to the state. So that doesn't mean that we're going to spend that much on the field.
But you're going to borrow that much.
We can borrow up to that amount. If the, if the costs come in, which, you know, both for the field and for the parking lot, when the estimates were made, gas was, oil was much higher, so I'm expecting that cost bids that we're going to get, for example, in the parking lot, it's going to be less because oil is less expensive.
Makes sense.
And we're not going to, we're not going to spend the amount that we've, that we've been authorized to spend. We're going to get the best deal that we can. And we're going to come in, whatever amount we come to, 40% is going to get paid by the state, and 60% is going to get paid by our cap reserve. So no decisions have been made. Like I said before, any letters that you have that are not from this board, that are from either an architect or whomever, are incorrect. I don't know how more, hopefully I'm clear enough.
No, no.
Okay.
Like I say, I'm not throwing the board under the bus. I'm saying the people that you've got, that you're paying, are misrepresenting.
Okay. We'll make sure that our business administrator, we'll take that under advisement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Amy Salinger, teacher at Otten Road. I just wanted to take a minute and thank all of you for the discussion for the strategic planning, as I was, I don't know if you noticed, us, a lot of nodding in the audience as you talked about a lot of things, and you all said great things. I just wanted to highlight the few that stood out to me. Talking about the achievement gap, I thought was really significant. A quick idea that comes to mind is class size, because the less students, especially in an elementary class, the less students there are, the more time they get with that teacher, and that could, would, I would think, would certainly help with the achievement gap. I was really happy, especially, I think, Mr. Cohen, you said something about EQ, wait, did you say, yeah, EQ, which I thought was great, because as much emphasis as we put on technology and grades and getting into college, we have to really think about the mental health of our students. As a teacher here, and as a parent of three children of my own, that's always tough, you know, in my mind. And I was also happy to hear many of you, and Mr. Kinn, I remember you saying it, but I think you all did, that not everybody has to go to college, and I think that's a really important message. Success is not because you went to college. Success is finding your passion and making yourself happy for whatever that is, whether it be the science, and math, and lawyer, and doctor, or the arts, a vocation, anything like that. So I was really happy to hear the robust discussion, and I just wanted to thank you for that. Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Yes, Mr. Cooper?
Yes. I just want to put on record what I've been talking to Dr. Schiff and some of the other administrators about, about the summer enrichment program, and my, I guess, not, my unhappiness, I guess, that due to the, not that I'm unhappy, that the parking lot's being done, but that the summer enrichment program is being moved, and that five and up is being cut off, we're cutting off a lot of students, plus the size of the enrichment program is shrinking significantly, due to the point that it has to be moved to another location. And the location that was chosen, for, I hope, good reason, was Woodford, which, again, is cutting off a lot of people who can't make it out to Woodford for that short period of time. And I think the program, the summer enrichment program, I know my kids and a lot of kids look forward to it, and now, it was growing significantly. I think this is cutting off a lot of people that may never return to the program, even when it comes back, hopefully, to the middle school. So I just want to put that on record, and hopefully, I don't know, at this point, it doesn't seem like anything's going to be done, because it's been live for a couple hours now, but I'm on record now.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cooper. All right. Any other business from the board members? Mrs. Haas?
Yeah, I'm a little, I'm a little concerned about the questions about the turf field. I understand that we use co-ops for many things, but I also understand that there are many co-ops.